Good evening. I'm John Wensky, chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, October 6, 2021. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Poplowski for their assistance with tonight's broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, October 20th. Our first order of business is public participation. We did receive two requests to speak at public participation tonight. We'll take them in the order that they were received. I also want to remind everybody in attendance, under policy number 123 for public participation in school committee meetings, Article 4 states that "public participation shall concern items that are within the scope of the school committee's authority. Therefore, any comments involving staff members or students must concern educational goals, policies, or budget of the Shrewsbury Public Schools or the performance of the superintendent." As I mentioned, I will take the requests in the order that they were received. Each participant will have up to three minutes to speak. I will start by asking Ms. Noreen Christie to come to the microphone. And Ms. Christie, if you could just introduce yourself from public record.
My name is Noreen Christie, and I am the president of the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association. I lived in Shrewsbury for 41 years, sent my three awesome, now adult children to Shrewsbury Public Schools, from kindergarten through graduation from Shrewsbury High School. I now live in Worcester, and one of the reasons I moved to Worcester was because I couldn't afford to live in Shrewsbury. I stand before you tonight to publicly read a petition signed by 226 paraprofessionals, some of whom have recently left the district to work for other school districts. Dear school committee members, we, the undersigned, are members of the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association. We're writing to express our frustration with the progress of our contract negotiations. We love our jobs, our colleagues, our families, and we are essential to the academic, social, and emotional well-being of the students in the district. We want to stay here in Shrewsbury, but not at wages that are detriment to our families. Despite the fact that the voters have passed an override and the district is receiving increased federal and state funding, the school committee's bargaining team has not taken this opportunity to right a longstanding wrong. The wages of Shrewsbury paraprofessionals are extremely low. As wages rise at jobs all around us, there will never be a more opportune time to bridge the gap to a living wage. We urge you to invest in paraprofessionals by negotiating a fair contract with significant wage increases for the good of our students, our families, and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Next up, I'd like to invite Mr. Jeffrey Sosa-Parkett to address the committee.
Thank you for, all of you, for allowing me to speak tonight. I am a resident here in Shrewsbury for the last 15 years. My daughter has already graduated through the Shrewsbury Schools, and my son is attending Sherwood, and this is his, in his fifth grade, sorry. Unfortunately, as we've all had to deal with COVID and stuff, last year we had hybrid, and hybrid worked and stuff, and also for children like Ryland, which the CDC reports that 57% of children under the age of 12 experience major headaches and migraines and stuff from having to wear the mask and stuff. What we're experiencing now with Ryland again is every day he's having to take two to four Advils every single day to get through the school day, and then we're giving him aspirin again when he gets home and stuff, or he's being sent home. So today I made the decision, after having to pick up my son from school again and stuff for headaches and stuff, I asked the principal and the nurse, are there any other options? Can he change his mask? Can he, can he wear one of the ones that pull up? Can we get him extra time when the headaches are coming and stuff to take the mask off, get his oxygen levels and stuff back up? I was told that that cannot happen and stuff, that the policies are what they are. So then I made a decision today, as everybody sitting up here today, every one of us that are in the industry are mandated reporters. I'm a mandated reporter, just as every single one of you are. And when you're recognizing child abuse or child neglect, and we're watching our children suffer, when there's other options or an ability to change their mask, I was forced as a parent to make the decision today to use my rights as a mandated reporter and file with DCF neglect and child abuse for my son against the school and stuff. Not that I'm not blaming the school, or the principal, or anybody that's sitting here. And so our jobs as mandated reporters, or for the 1,500 children that have come through my care, my number one job is social, emotional, and the safety of our children. No parent should have to give their child, or a nurse at school, give our children two to four aspirins to get them through the day when there's other options and stuff. So I'm here to talk to you guys tonight. We need to go through, what are those options? Are there more mask breaks and stuff? Any of those type of scenarios there is what we need to be working with. So I don't want to get into my, my son's history, or his health, or, or any of those things. A medical exception is not being granted and stuff, but yet we know what's happening, not just to my son, you know, like Ryland, or sorry, I guess I'm not allowed to say my son's name and stuff, like my son is talking about, the nurses seeing this every single day. As my son's coming down to the office, so are other children. So he's, you know, the nurses aren't there to distribute, you know, Advil or Tylenol, or whatever it is that we're giving and stuff, just to get our kids through the school day and stuff. So I'm asking the board and stuff, what are the solutions? I have obviously told DCF I'm in a different position than most parents. One, I've been in the industry for 20 years. I know what the rules are. I work hand in hand on a daily basis with DCF. There's no way that I will ever tolerate them screening out. Most parents would call, DCF would screen it out, and no one's going to hear a word about it. So I'm using my position of being in the industry and being the federal candidate that's running for Congress in Shrewsbury and across District 2 to basically raise my voice and say, we will not tolerate a screen out, or I will bring the press, and, and we'll do it another way and stuff. There's got to be a solution and stuff. We cannot be putting our children through this, and especially when the science and the CDC clearly tells us that 57% of our children are experiencing this. So I'm asking the board to come up with some solutions here, so that one, my son stays in school, and so does everybody else's child, and that we're not giving them. It's not healthy. We, as adults, shouldn't be taking two, four Advil in a five-hour period, but yet that's what I'm having to do so that my son can go to school and stuff. So how we're going to address that, I don't know. And, and no, I did not want to have to file a 51A, but once the principal and the nurse told me, there are no options, what other option do I have as a parent and stuff? So that's why I'm here tonight, was to notify the board and stuff that I've had to make this decision as a parent, and that we need to address it, and basically let the board know that for other parents, you know, I'm not going to get screened out. This will move forward, and I don't really want to put the school board through it, but I have no choice, because I was presented today, that there's no other option and stuff. So I apologize to everybody that I have to file it, but I am a mandated reporter, and all of you are, and we all know, under normal circumstances, this is child abuse, period, end of discussion, and we know it and stuff. So the board itself, why is nobody else filing? Why are teachers not standing up and filing themselves and stuff? You know, you look at, you know, you were asking to talk about some of the statistics, or, you know, where we're at here, and so the very people, I apologize.
Mr. Sosa, we're at time at this point.
Okay. I'll email everything else off, but let's just take the CDC. Do we realize that the CDC has 15,000 employees that have been made exempt? The FDA, 12,000 and stuff. Pfizer, 112,000 of their employees exempt, but we're putting our children through this kind of abuse? That's where we should all be standing up as mandated reporters and saying, the people writing the rules aren't following them, but you're sending our kids home from school. They're not being educated, and when they sit there with headaches for three hours out of six hours, they're not learning. We need to do something about it. Please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sosa. Okay, I'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Chairpersons and Members Reports. Colleagues, anything to share this week?
Yep.
Okay, there being none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. In terms of Superintendent's Report, I would like to make a notice to the public that on Saturday, October 16th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., we'll offer for public sale many surplus furniture and equipment items that are now obsolete for our operations, but maybe something that people need or want. This will be from the Old Beale School and cash-only sales. There's no price negotiating, but this is a way if people are looking for student chairs, desks, tables, filing cabinets, plastic bins, other similar items. It'll be Rain or Shine, it'll be held at the Old Beale School at One Maple Ave. Again, it's on Saturday, October 16th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Mr. Collins has made it clear that it's no negotiating cash only. So you must remove the items at the time of purchase. So if people are interested, that's happening on October 16th, and that's Superintendent's Report this evening.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions or comments for Dr. Sawyer?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. We have a report regarding the district response to the pandemic, and I will hand it back to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you very much. So, you know, again, our primary goal is to provide full-time in-school learning for students with minimal disruptions while using a variety of mitigation strategies to minimize the risk of contracting COVID-19. Our approach is to implement those mitigation strategies that reduce the risk of transmission, create a sense of belonging for our students, and support their social, emotional, and mental health needs, and to provide learning opportunities that are supporting students' academic needs, of course, at the same time. In terms of the statistics that are up to date as of today, currently Massachusetts, according to the Johns Hopkins Resource Center, continues to have the second lowest positivity rate in the United States. It's now at 1.68%, so it's dropped a bit over the past couple of weeks, which is a good sign. Additionally, as far as state case numbers, you can see that that's the distribution by age. We continue to see a smaller number for ages zero to nine, and overall, the last two weeks, ages 10 to 19, a little smaller than the age 20 to 29, but other than that, higher than other age groups. In terms of hospitalizations, you can see from the state report here, on a per 100,000 person basis, young children are the least likely to be hospitalized. Ages zero to 11, that's less than a one in 100,000 hospitalization rate, slightly over that for ages 12 to 17 years and 18 to 19. So hospital admissions tend to be very low for children in the Commonwealth. In terms of our local context, as of the last report ending September 25th, the state has published that the positivity rate for 14-day period was 2.04%, and that's not even halfway to the 5% benchmark, so that continues to be a good statistic for Shrewsbury. Also in local context, comparing the number of cases in the community versus what we're seeing in Shrewsbury Public Schools students, and I apologize because Ms. Freeman made that look straight, and then my computer did not look straight, and now it looks straight on my computer, but not on your display. So we'll go with Ms. Freeman's display next time. This past week, weekend of October 1st, we had 56 cases in the town of Shrewsbury, and we had 17 student cases. That was our largest one-week number that we've had since the school year began. And so far this week, we had 17 already as well, and there's two days to go. We report Saturday through Friday to match the town's reporting as well. In the context of our student population, that, that is a little over 2/10 of 1% of students in the district who are positive cases this week so far. So that's, again, something we're trying to report on when we have these meetings every other week. The current case count, again, this week to date, we've had 17 cases. 14 of them were in school during their infectious period. This week, one case has been traced to a possible exposure in school. And the overall numbers you can see for the year are up to 73, 59 of whom were in school during their infectious period, and we have nine total cases now. We did have a suspected in-school transmission that we, that is probable, at Coolidge School last week, and we've had a case this week at the high school. So again, we're mindful of the fact that the virus can be transmitted at school. It's in a very small number of the cases we're experiencing. Most cases do not transmit at school, but it's something, again, we have to continue to be mindful of what our mitigation strategies are. In terms of the, just reminding people that every Monday on the website, we, there's a link on our homepage to the COVID data dashboard. That's just a screenshot of what this week's looks like. So if people are interested, they can always go to our website to get the up-to-date statistics from the previous week. In terms of by school, you'll see, similar to what we're seeing in the age distribution across the state, that most of our cases, 30 out of the 73 have been at the high school. Other than that, we did see the numbers, again, last week at Coolidge pop up a bit, and then otherwise, relatively small numbers at each of the rest of our schools. The bulk of cases have been among high school age students. Our test-and-stay program continues to be a huge benefit in terms of keeping kids in school. Again, it started back in a couple weeks into September. It's optional. Families have to consent to the program to participate. Most do if their child's a close contact, and you can see that, you know, they receive a rapid By-Next-Now test each morning, all the way through Day 7, if they've been exposed at school to a positive individual. And if they're negative and asymptomatic, they can remain at school. You can see from this next slide that over 18 days of testing, we've had 230 individuals participate. We've administered just over 600 tests, and of those, we've had nine positive results. So nine of our 73 cases came as a result of test-and-stay, and it's obviously a, another layer of mitigation to catch if someone is a close contact and they're asymptomatic, but they're positive, they can catch that. Interestingly, that's 1.4% of the tests that have been administered that almost, it matches exactly the state positivity rate. Thought that was interesting. But the most important statistic here is 592 student learning days have been preserved as a result of test-and-stay. That's a huge benefit. Many of you may have seen in the media this week that there are districts across the Commonwealth that are still waiting to have test-and-stays set up. There have been a lot of challenges with the state contractor and their subcontractors having the manpower to make this work, and I want to thank Mr. Collins, Ms. Yu, Ms. Freeman, and everyone working with them, that they really pushed and were ready and, and really worked closely to make sure that Shrewsbury was able to get off the ground with this as soon as possible, because that, their, their efforts are certainly paying off for our students. We've also begun our routine COVID safety testing, formerly known as surveillance or pooled testing. Right now, that's been an optional weekly at-home test via a saliva sample. We began staff testing on the 21st and student testing on the 28th. Unfortunately, the lab we're working with through the state contractor right now is not being able to give us a statistic for how many tests they've run. We're trying to get that statistic, but we've had four positive test results as a result of that surveillance testing so far over those weeks. We are strongly advocating with the state to shift from the saliva test to a nasal swab test, a shallow nasal swab, like we had last year. We were told initially that was not possible through the state program. It looks like they're adjusting, and we're very hopeful that in upcoming rounds of testing, we'll be able to shift from that saliva test to the nasal swab test, which is much easier to use, and will hopefully promote more people participating. Again, our primary goal is providing that full-time in-school learning with minimal disruptions, and we're using mitigation strategies to minimize the risk of contracting COVID-19. You know, so far, we've had a successful year of school in terms of maintaining classes in school. We have not closed down or shut, quote unquote, shut down any classrooms. We've not had to close down any schools. We want that level of stability for our students. It's affecting a very small percentage of our overall student and staff population. That said, we have to continue to take it seriously and provide the mitigation that, that we need to, and we'll continue to monitor things closely. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has at this time.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Dr. McGee?
Yeah, very good report. I'm curious to know if we know what percent of the staff and what percent of the students have volunteered for the pool testing program.
That is a statistic I don't have with me this evening, and Ms. Freeman wasn't able to join us this evening. It's a, it's a high percentage for the staff. I'm not sure if Mr. Collins has that information perhaps. And with students, it's been a little bit tougher getting it off the ground just because of some of the changes from last year, but...
Sure. The latest data for staff is about 625 or so staff have signed up for...
That's over 2/3.
Provided consent, and then I'll say our student numbers are probably a little bit over 22, 2300, so about 30% of our student population.
30% students and about 2/3 or more of staff.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions or comments, Mr. Palich?
Just a comment, just to praise the approach that the district has taken and to highlight the statistic a few slides back, about 592 days of student learning preserved. I think that that's something that I really like to see. Obviously, we know last year, obviously prioritizing safety, of course, that a lot of students lost a lot of learning time, and this year I am pleased to see that we are able to do everything within our power safely to keep kids learning as often as possible. So kudos.
Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, I'd like to just acknowledge what was mentioned there and may, may be missed by some listening at home. The advocacy for switching to a nasal swab, certainly I've heard a fair bit from parent, community around some of the challenges with the, the current method. After we'd gotten used to the last method, and we're all adapting, but I thank you for trying to take that, and I hope that our partners at the state level will, will see through to figure out another way to get this done. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Great. Thank you very much for the report, as always.
Yeah, and just one thing I could add, Mr. Wensky. I know it'll be being publicized in a variety of ways, but yesterday, the Shrewsbury Board of Health voted to implement a mask mandate throughout the community in all public spaces, and they specifically included schools, all public and private schools and any other, any schools within the town. And that is, you know, their authority supersedes that of the school committee and that of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And so, you know, we can be stricter in a variety of ways if we choose to be, but not less strict. I know that Mr. Wensky attended the meeting. I know that they indicated that they have not created any particular metric, but they're going to be monitoring the situation closely in terms of when, that they may change that at some point in the future. But I know there's been some stories in the media about the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's mask mandate as of October 15th, that schools that have a greater than 80% vaccination rate would be able to be a mask optional for those who are vaccinated, and, but that's still a local decision whether to take advantage of that, and that right now their target date to remove the mandate from the state level is November 1st. The Shrewsbury School Committee has a masking policy in place that goes back to August, and that's something that I would advise that you just keep in place for now. But the, the Shrewsbury Board of Health has now taken action, and so regardless of what the issue is, the masking is required indoors in our schools, with the exception of eating and drinking, and, you know, that the like, mask breaks and so forth going forward. So we will continue to stay in close contact with the Board of Health and the Health Department, but I thought it was important to mention that change in policy from the Board of Health.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Okay. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is also a time-scheduled appointment. It is a report on the School Resource Officer Program. The mission of the School Resource Officer, or SRO, program is to support and foster the safety and health, healthy development of all students in the district through a strategic and appropriate use of the law enforcement resources with the intent of achieving positive outcomes for youth and public safety. Here tonight to present, in addition to Dr. Sawyer, we're happy to have Principal Todd Buzidlow from Shrewsbury High School and Chief Kevin Anderson from the Shrewsbury Police Department. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, and I'll get things started. We appreciate this opportunity to discuss. Each year, we bring updates to the school committee about safety and security of our schools, and as a result of a variety of things, there certainly has been more scrutiny over the past couple of years relative to school resource officer programs across the nation. And we know that locally, the work of the town's DEI Task Force recently, it was, information was presented directly to myself and other school administrators through the Public Safety Subcommittee, that there was a recommendation that would be coming out, or they were making the recommendation as part of their official work, that this program be discontinued in Shrewsbury. But, so I believe it's important to make sure that the community knows information about the program in Shrewsbury, its origins, and how it's administered within our schools. So on this first slide, just a few key facts. The program in Shrewsbury began in the 2001, 2002 timeframe. It's been in its current iteration since 2007, which is that we have two Shrewsbury police officers who work under the police department. They're police department employees who are assigned as school resource officers, or commonly known as SROs. One for Shrewsbury High School, and then one for the remaining grades, preschool through grade eight. There is a memorandum of understanding that has been all along through the years of the program. There's a current updated memorandum of understanding between, signed by myself and Chief Anderson, between the departments which governs the program, ensures that it aligns with best practices, as well as is aligned with Massachusetts law. And there is Massachusetts law that was passed in the past year that has some very specific elements that govern school resource officer programs in Massachusetts, and of course, we want to be sure that we're well-aligned with what the state law and regulations are. And just to be clear as well, you know, school resource officers in Shrewsbury, they certainly collaborate with our school administration, and they support our schools, but they do not function as school administrators. That's a clear distinction, and we'll speak more to that as we go through the, the process. But I was very pleased that Chief Anderson, you know, the police department and the school department have had an excellent partnership, certainly during the 25 years I've been working in the, in the community, in the school district. And I think it's continued to be strengthened over time, and it's, I'm very pleased to continue that strong partnership with Chief Anderson as the now relatively new chief of police here in Shrewsbury. In the next few slides, I will turn it over to him to talk a little bit about the definition and the role, some of the goals of the program, and so on, and the training that they had to go as well. So I'll turn it over to Chief Anderson. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. School resource officer. So what is a school resource officer? School resource officer, a career law enforcement officer with sworn authority, deployed in community-oriented policing, assigned by the Shrewsbury Police Department to work in collaboration with the schools. The sworn law enforcement officer, they're properly selected. In fact, we select the candidate, it's not based on seniority, it's based on my recommendations, as well as Dr. Sawyer's administration's recommendations, and we choose the best qualified person for that position. We think that personality is very important. It's an important piece for that school resource officer. Also, they have to be properly trained. They go to additional training more than what the typical officer does. We have mandated training. We also have additional training that we provide to all officers within the department. The school resource officers went to training two weeks ago for five days, and they are now certified school resource officers, which is going to be required by law by the end of the year. The school resource officer's role, they're a resource for the school community, the teachers, the parents, as well as the students. They support for students, staff, and school administration. They're a positive role model. They're a mentor. In fact, we have six officers that are on the force, that Officer Hester was a mentor, and now they're police officers. Also, they promote school safety. They support a positive school climate. We think that's very important. They collaborate with the school leadership, provide appropriate support for students and families, and they also build relationships with students. And we think that's what it's all about, is building relationship with the students and having non-enforcement interaction. So the training they went to a few weeks back, and that... So the training they went to a few weeks back, and that made both school resource officers certified nationally, and they, they went to a training that was put on by National Association School Resource Officers, and it's accredited, and it's nationally recognized training. Different topics that they worked on was working in educational environments, understanding students with special needs, ethics, developing and supporting successful relationships with diverse students, youth trends in school culture, social media and cyber safety, violence and victimization, and understanding teen thinking. Also additionally this year, we sent all our officers to additionally, additional training. This year, we spent all, sent all the officers to fear and impartial policing. It's a training led by Lori Fredell, she has a PhD, she's nationally recognized in the subject, she's written several books on the matter. Training was not part of the mandatory curriculum of in-service training, but we felt it was important for all of our officers to attend that training. The school resource officers attended as well. In addition to this training, all supervisors were required to attend police reform and bias-free policing training, law and understanding. After the supervisors received that training, they went back to all their staff, and they provided training on the subject matter, and that includes the school resource officers that work within the detective bureau. At this time, we're going to give the principal perspective of the school resource officer program.
Thanks, Chief. So, thanks for having us tonight, and at least allowing us to provide some perspective of my experience and my colleagues' experience with the school resource officers here in Shrewsbury. With our assistant principals and principal group, there's strong consensus around the program being worthwhile and beneficial for our school communities, really focused on ideas, and, and the chief has talked about this, around really collaborating with the police officers in the police department. From my perspective, things that have happened during my tenure at Shrewsbury High School, we work hand-in-hand around, might seem like small details, but for those who have attended events at Shrewsbury High School, like traffic coordination, EMS preparedness, things that we don't necessarily think about, it's streamlined our work with the police department and had appropriate amount of staffing on for major events at the high school, whether it's a concert, whether it's a senior dinner from the senior center, whether it's a musical, whether it's an athletic event, graduation this past year, we've worked in close collaboration with the department, and having a school resource officer, someone that can be onsite, assess, evaluate, look at traffic patterns, and make recommendations, and actually implement those in the field are really important to us, and actually make our eventually smooth and give people in the community a sense of calm and, and order. So, our school resource officers also work really in collaboration with us around school safety, and looking at planning and drilling us, and really looking at crisis response plans. We go through this, as we know, we just came off a table talk, a table, table, tabletop exercise, I think, was that last week?
Yes.
Last week around emergency preparedness with various departments here in town is a really good exercise, real-world application of some really heavy stuff, but again, coordinating those departments is really important, and having that, that opportunity is outstanding for us. I think what people don't understand is our school resource officer, from the high school's perspective, has, has visited class, classrooms, has taught classes, has helped coordinate our annual senior safety assemblies, that includes a mock accident, and coordinates everything around that. He's also coordinated rape-aggression defense systems, the RAD training that we've done with our, for our female students, and he really, and, and the chief has said this, he's mentored six students, but also works on talking about the profession of public safety and, and law enforcement in general, and trying to mentor students who are interested in that. And I know in the past, pre-COVID, we've had students participate in ride-alongs with the police department after school hours to kind of get a sense of what that looks like prior to leaving for college or university or entering the field of criminal justice at a university. You know, another thing that really goes under the radar a bit is also their responsiveness to threat assessment. I know that we've had a number, like any school community has had threats. Today, I just saw the news, there was a school shooting in Texas, and I think when we have threats like that, our school resource, particularly Mark Hesser, has, has really coordinated and accelerated efforts to coordinate with not only the police department, but also our school to mitigate those threats, work with parents discreetly, work with students discreetly, and really make, bring a sense of calm to our school community, because some of those things get legs with social media. So, those are some of the things that have happened. I also can't stress enough that both school resource officers have visited homes for wellness checks on students, students who are truant, students haven't showed up, parents who might need some service in terms of advice. They do that thing with our community, and they also, that's building relationships with our parents and trying to create positive relationships. The other thing that I think is really important is, you know, I think the presence of our school resource officer and the way he, and I think Chief, the chief said this, is the personality that the resource officers have is really important. Students reach out to our resource officer to potentially share information they have about potential crimes that have happened in the community, they feel nervous, they feel unsettled, they want to share those things, that has been, that some of that information has resulted in, you know, mitigation of crime or solving of cases within the community that have been pretty significant in the past, so I think really building the relationships within the community, being a presence, is, is really, really important. The, the other piece that, from my perspective, the SRO's never been a part of discipline. There's nothing around school discipline that happens with our SRO. That's strictly what we do as school administrators. And as the chief said and Dr. Sawyer said, there's a strong MOU, and that's been that way since I've been in the district, and it's really strongly articulated about the roles and responsibilities of the SRO, which are great, because when they're clearly articulated, it makes our jobs a lot easier by delineating roles and responsibilities. You know, in my time in Shrewsbury, there's only been two arrests at the high school. One arrest was related to a domestic situation at home where our school resource officer was mandated by statute to make an arrest at school based upon a complaint from a parent. And the other one was resulting in a home, armed home invasion in a different community, and we thought the student had a weapon, carrying a weapon in school, probably didn't get a lot of press, but we did that very discreetly, working with the Shrewsbury Police and also the neighboring community, that exercise had a warrant for a person's arrest, and we felt that there was credible threat that the person may have a weapon in school. So those are the two instances in my time in Shrewsbury where students have actually been arrested, but it's been really discreetly. It's not something you'd see on the, on the news where you see these videos. It's very calm, it's very non-confrontational, it's very subdued, and we try and treat a lot of the people with respect, and, and generally speaking, I think Mark, Scott Mensor, and Sean Valier have done a, a really good job in terms of working through and taking our lead as school administrators and not, I won't say overstepping, but certainly going out on their own. They look for us in terms of what we want to do, which I think is really, really important.
So, and certainly when you have the opportunity for questions, Mr. Buzidlow, this is how many years in Shrewsbury High School, Mr. Buzidlow?
I want to say it's 17, but I could be wrong.
So as an assistant principal and principal, and so, you know, in terms of the, he's been in the entire time of the most recent iteration, you know, working with Officer Hester, and just want to emphasize again that that disciplinary piece has not been part of what we've, of the program here. I know that in other places around the country, that may be the case, it is not the case here in Shrewsbury. Like any other program we have, we want to consider what opportunities we have for improvement. I did ask for feedback from our principals and assistant principals in preparing this report, and while it's clear there's strong overall consensus for the program that is helpful, probably the area that, that has been, we need to continue to work on, and it's really more of a circumstantial issue, is that over time, there have been times where staffing levels at the police department due to budgetary issues, staffing being stretched, where one or both of the school resource officers have had to be out on patrol rather than serving in their role as an SRO during a school day. That's typically probably affected more the pre-K through eight piece, and so, you know, certainly principals noted times where they were reaching out to try to connect and that, and the SRO wasn't available because they were out on patrol. We're hopeful with the town being on stronger financial footing now, post-override, that there will be much, many fewer situations where the SRO's not available, you know, during the school day to be able to respond to, to an issue. And similarly, Officer Valier became the new SRO for pre-K to grade eight a year ago September. Obviously, he was in the middle of COVID, it's not a normal kind of situation, and plus he was being called on patrol at times as well. So it's just going to be very important to make sure that he is properly introduced to the students in all the different schools, and he's, he's working, of course, with the eight other schools, with one officer assigned to the high school. Officer Hester will assist us with issues in other schools if, if necessary, or if the other SRO is not available, but, you know, the nature of the program is that one is assigned to the high school, and so we're going to look to make sure that we're doing things to build that familiarity, because that's part of the goal of the program, is that students see a police officer as, as what we would talk about in our social studies classes at the lower elementary level as a community helper, and, and being able to understand that there, a police officer present in the school doesn't mean there's a problem. So we have to make sure that there is, you know, we continue to make sure that we're doing that. And before we turn it over for questions, you know, one other thing that I would, I would cite, in addition to maintaining a safe environment for our students, I also think it's important to emphasize maintaining a safe environment for our staff. We're very fortunate to be in a community where the instances where we are concerned about the safety of our staff for a variety of reasons are, are pretty limited. However, like every other community anywhere, we have situations where we have individuals who, for whatever reason, might become upset, may, you know, create a situation where a staff member may not be feeling comfortable. You know, very recently, had a case where there was a, a interaction between a parent and a school administrator where the parent was frankly inappropriately angry, indicated they were going to be coming to the school the next morning to, you know, have a conversation about it, and that was, that was a case where the administrator asked for the school resource officer to be present just in case, you know, the parent was, you know, being inappropriate when they showed up, you know, hopefully cooler heads prevailed and all that, but there have been times where we've had some situations where we've had, whether a veiled threat, or someone who's indicating that they're going to, you know, whether we like it or not, they're going to show up at an event or whatever it might be, and the school resource officer is able to handle those situations. It's, it's very much one thing I know that some of the school administrators cited, and I certainly have experienced this myself, going back to when I was a school administrator and also as superintendent, when you have a relationship between the school resource officer and the administrator, it's much more of a comfortable situation for the principal or assistant principal to pick up the phone and say, here's the situation we're dealing with, you know, around, you know, a family situation, a parent who might be upset, whatever it might be, and ask for advice about how to deal with something, or even something as mundane as traffic enforcement, where they're running into some issues with traffic at parent drop-off or pickup, or whatever it might be. Because they have their relationship and they know the school resource officer is there to support them, those kinds of, there's not as much, there, there aren't barriers between that, as opposed to, I think all of us feel is a certain level of formality to actually call the police department and ask for assistance. You, you think that that's reserved for times, obviously an emergency, but something that's really a high-level kind of thing. And there's lots of things that probably wouldn't rise to a level of, boy, I really need to call the police department, but we can talk to the school resource officer, and they can, hopefully, and they often do, you know, they do everything they can to, to help make the situation better. And so I, I think that partnership is a really key element of what this, this program provides to our schools. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions along with Chief Anderson and Mr. Buzidlow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Buzidlow, questions and comments? Mr. Palich?
I want to thank the chief and Mr. Buzidlow for this presentation, I think, with all of the conversations around school safety and criminal justice, it's important for us as school committee members to be familiar with this program, so thank you for taking the time. My question focuses on the issue of student discipline, which obviously you touched on, Mr. Buzidlow. It's incumbent upon us as a district to look at how we're disciplining students, making sure we are putting on an equity lens as we do that. We obviously had a diversity-equity audit last year that focused on students of color and their rate of discipline versus white students, which is something of concern to all of us, something we need to focus on, and I believe that the data that drove that was related to suspensions and expulsions, which has to get reported. Can you clarify, Mr. Buzidlow, the SRO is not participating in those decisions around whether or not a student would be suspended or expelled, or any of those conversations?
Yeah, absolutely not. They're not involved in those conversations at all. Those conversations and decisions are made at the administrative level. There's never a time where they even have an opinion about it. It's, it's, we exercise and put forth what is in the student handbook and what we know around mass general laws, as a principal, what my authority is around those actions. There's no police intervention at all. There's, there's nothing, that's coming strictly from the school administrator. Thank you.
Sean, Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, I also want to thank you very much for being here tonight and taking the time to be with us. As all of my colleagues know, I serve as the representative on the DEI Task Force for the school committee, and while I served on the Public Education Subcommittee, and this one arose out of public safety, certainly I was aware it was, it was coming. And I really appreciate, Dr. Sawyer, that you took the, the time to ask for feedback from the principals, to understand the, what, what they see as the value of, of the program, and making sure that this program aligns to the goals that you've set out seems, seems important in, in our role. I think one of the things that I would love to see us going forward, and I, I do not speak for all 30 members of the diversity-equity-inclusion task force, but what I think one of the concerns is certainly that in other districts, there have been different impacts, differential impacts for some, for some students and, and families, and I think it's important that we continue to ask questions and to make sure that that's not happening here, and clearly that is not the intent of what, of the, of the program that you have put in place, but whether it's to think about in a future panorama survey or survey out to parents, what their perception is of the program, what their perception is of how, of how this is going, and so that if there are any unintended consequences or issues around culture that might be bubbling up, particularly for students who maybe have a, a different background or experience, that we're aware of those things, and that we can, as you said, make course corrections along the way. I have nothing in front of me to think that's true, but I don't know that we've consistently asked, and so I think it's important for us too, and what I think the task force, as I guess, would like to see is that, is that we make that a regular part of our, of our assessment, looking from a student lens, how, how are they feeling? And I hope that it will be as glowing, and that they'll say, I see Officer Hester as a resource for myself, and if it's not the case, that we can act, that we can then be in a position to make any, any corrections that, that might be appropriate. And so I, I really do appreciate your spending the time with us this evening, and I certainly hear the value that the administration finds, and I think we just need to make sure we're hearing those voices, not as an action in the next few days, but over the course of the year, whenever you do another survey with students, that it's appropriate that we sort of roll that in to many other questions that we're asking about culture in our, in our building. Thank you.
Ms. Fritz?
I also want to thank you for coming and educating us as well as to, you know, my children are long out of the schools, but I, I've learned some new things about SROs myself tonight, and I think as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, you know, our police are part of our community. I mean, they're not only in an adversarial position, they're part of our community, they help us, they're with us in every step of the way, so I think we have to always make sure that our students don't see them in a light that's only, only adversarial, that they're, and I think especially, like you said, six students that have come through the school are now police officers back in our community, and I think that's a good thing, you know, that they've seen this as a career path, it's a good thing for us, you know, to let the community know. So I, I like hearing that part of it, and I also, you know, when we talk about where, you know, where are we going, what do we want to look at, and I've paid attention to the DEI Task Force, and Lindsay's been our, our community, you know, from the school committee on there, but I also think we want to make sure that we're putting a Shrewsbury lens on it and not a national lens. What do we do in our community? What, what are the results that are affecting our students? And I agree with Lindsay, you know, like, what can we do? And I think when I looked at the survey, I think a lot of the results were maybe more from an adult view, and, you know, what are the students saying, particularly more at the high school level? Maybe we can talk to more of the students there and see what they're saying, and I think if there's that partnership, especially at the high school level. But I think it's something, it's a good thing for our students to have, a good thing for our students to see as well, that this is a partnership, it's a community, a good thing for our community to, to keep and keep moving forward with. So thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, so if I could just respond to that, I think a couple of things. When I think of, you know, we, we've been in this really funky time around the pandemic, right, and we haven't really been in school, but pre, pre-COVID, I would say this, is that when Officer Hester's not at school and his, and his cruiser isn't out front, when he's on training or whatnot, there's probably more questions from kids around where is he? There's a sense of like, okay, where is he? And I'm not sure if that's general anxiety around what we're seeing in society, but kids are aware he's there, kids are aware he's a resource, and it does bring a sense of calm and reassurance to people, particularly in the troubling times we're kind of living in. I also have perspective of working in another school district around their program, and I also have different perspectives around my And I also have different perspectives around my principal group. Not only in my state association, but also our league and how different communities surrounding us take a very, a vastly different approach than we do here in Shrewsbury. So I think in comparison, in my opinion, and what I've seen, what I've heard from colleagues in my own past experience, I think that Shrewsbury has done a really, really good job, particularly with the MOU, particularly with the type of relationships, and particularly allowing school administrators to take the lead around this stuff. And police are a resource. I think that's really, really important. And I feel that we do a good job of that, and we kind of do it, I don't want to say right, but we certainly do it, again, markedly different than what I've seen in other places, which I think is a tribute to the close collaboration with the police department, particularly Dr. Sawyer and the chief police, Chief Anderson, and prior to that, Chief Hester.
I did have one more comment. I, I also think we live in a different world than when maybe we all grew up. And it is, it's a little scarier, frankly. And I think, you know, when we think of safety, we definitely want that mentoring piece, no doubt. I think that's a wonderful thing because students need that. But I also think there's a safety element that's different today than it was when I was growing up. And I went to an inner city school more than what a Shrewsbury Public Schools is. And I think it's something that if I were a parent and my kids were still in this school system, I would still want that safety component to be there because it is a different world that we live in now. And I think that's something we still need to keep in mind.
Any additional comments, questions? Would like to thank you all for the presentation. I know over the years of being on the board, we've had various, you know, school safety presentations that focus on variety of emergency drills. But I think it's important for the public to understand the intent of the school resource officer role and how it's of value to the school community. And as Sandy mentioned, I did learn a lot. Obviously, being a parent of a high schooler over the last six years, I've always noticed the police cruiser in the front of the building. And I'm, I'm familiar with Officer Hester. But I think, you know, when you talk specifically about the threat assessments, building the partnership with the students and the parents, I think it's, it's really important for the public to understand how this role is valuable within our community. So thank you so much for the presentation. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
I just want to again thank Chief Anderson for taking the time to be with us this evening and partnering with us as, as we've continued to, you know, work on, on the program and respond to, you know, continued expectations at the state level. And, you know, appreciate the, the key training that's being provided to these officers. And again, I think Mr. Buzidlo speaks well on behalf of his administrative colleagues. The point is well taken, certainly, that we want to be sure that, you know, we have, we have opportunities for stakeholders. And, you know, I certainly want to make sure that, you know, anyone who's watching, families, parents, staff members, students, we are, we are always open to feedback about any of our programs, including our school resource officer program. And so there may be times where formally we're asking, but certainly informally, there's always the opportunity. And frankly, you know, with, in my experience in Shrewsbury, if parents are not happy about something or students aren't happy about something at the high school level, they usually let us know. And, and I can say that in my entire time as superintendent, I've not received a complaint about the school resource officer program. But it doesn't mean we can't continue to ask and find ways to get feedback to make sure that people are, you know, understanding what its purpose is and making sure we're meeting the mark. Appreciate the opportunity to present the information and knowing that, you know, the work, you know, that everyone is doing, certainly those who are involved with the town's DEI task force. And I look forward to their presentation of their report to the Board of Selectmen. You know, people are doing a lot of work to try to make sure that we are doing our best as a community. And we need to continue, as we continue to do work in our schools, to make sure that we're addressing issues of equity and diversity and inclusion. And we are certainly committed to that and looking at things through that lens. So I appreciate the opportunity to share the perspective of the program and how it operates here in Shrewsbury. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is under policy. It's a committee discussion on the potential policy on mandatory vaccination of staff. Just for some background, as you know, many organizations, including public school districts in some places, have implemented policies regarding the mandatory vaccination of employees with a COVID-19 vaccine. The school committee tonight will discuss whether such a policy should be implemented for school district employees. The school district has not formally requested proof of vaccination status of employees to date. An anonymous polling of staff indicate the approximately, that approximately 94% of staff were fully vaccinated as of the beginning of the school year. So here to discuss with us, Dr. Sawyer and Barb Malone, our executive director of HR.
And we're available to answer any questions. I know that the committee wanted to discuss the issue, and we're happy to take whatever direction or if you have any specific questions this evening about potential implementation issues. You know, if the committee wanted to move forward, at a future date, you'd want to take a vote. And in the meantime, we, we need to bargain, as you mentioned, the, you know, impact with any of our employee associations.
Correct. Yeah, correct. So colleagues want to discuss this? Any thoughts about this potential policy? Anybody want to start?
Mr. Palich. Go first again.
Sure.
You know, my thought on this, and I recognize that the question of whether or not to require vaccination in many settings is a very charged debate in a lot of contexts right now. The question of whether or not to, for employers to mandate vaccination among staff, the question of whether or not to require proof of vaccination enter various public facilities is very emotionally charged. It is something that a lot of members of the public have very strong feelings about. I'm no exception to that. I have strong personal feelings about a lot of those debates as well. My reflections and thoughts on this keep bringing me back to, and it's, it's fitting, the topic that's just coming before us on the agenda. We have always had a higher standard for safety inside of a public school building. When we have a conversation about requiring vaccination for staff, we are not talking about requiring vaccination to enter a restaurant. We're not talking about requiring something to work in an office building or to go to a movie theater. We're talking about a public school setting where we have always, in a variety of contexts, had a much higher standard for keeping everyone safe. So my attitude on this is I do favor requiring an employee vaccination requirement with an allowance for a medical or religious exemption.
At the moment, the number of cases that we're seeing of COVID is highest in the age group that represents parents and also is, is rising in the child age group. It still is a significant problem in the schools. As Mr. Palich said, we're requiring these students to come in and stay in these buildings and, and get their coursework. And so I do believe that it, the mandate represents us making our best effort to ensure a safe environment for those students.
And I agree with Jason. I think this is a very charged discussion, emotionally charged. And I respect an individual's right to decide whether or not they want to be vaccinated. However, children are required by law to attend school. And last year, when we were working with our union groups and we were returning to school, one thing that we did hear was that health and safety was the number one concern about coming to school and mitigating risk. And now that we do have vaccine, it is one of the, the main things that people can do to be healthy and safe in a school environment where students must go to school. So for those reasons, I do support a mandatory vaccination. But I do agree with having allowances for a medical exemption and a religious exemption.
Ms. Heffernan.
Thank you very much. I think six months ago, we may, we maybe would have been slightly out of step in having such a conversation. But at this point in time, between the federal government's push through OSHA on, on employers, the all-state employees are going to be required to be vaccinated as of October 17th to maintain employment. And we know other communities are considering this. I am in strong support with my colleagues on, on this issue, understanding that there are strong feelings and appreciating those. I have two kids in the district who are not eligible to be vaccinated right now. And they, they come every day, but I'm even more concerned about the children who are medically vulnerable, who need to be in our building and need the services in our building. And, and so I, I know in addition, another overlay on this, and, you know, there's two overlays on this. One, our anecdotal evidence seems as though many, many of our staff have probably already made this choice. And secondly, we know that some, some of the statewide unions have already been calling for this in addition. And that it's, that they see it as a protection for their, for their staff. You know, and I think in keeping both staff and students safe, the idea that we had 17 kids this week and it's only Wednesday, if I have your data right, Dr. Sawyer, from earlier, and we had 17 last week, tells me we are not on a turning downward cycle which is where we'd rather be. And so I know there's lots of, lots of details to be figured out about exactly how and when and what documentation. And I have been in those conversations professionally with my employer, so I, I under, I understand the complexity. But I do think that it's, it's the right decision for us to make as a, as a community at this point in time.
Thank you very much. I do agree with my colleagues as well. We've always said that the health and safety of our students and staff is and should be our first priority. I'm in favor of the requirement. I understand the sensitivity around it, certainly out there. But I think what keeps me up at night are the students in particular that aren't eligible for vaccination. And we know children under 12, our students that are under 12 that are not eligible currently. It's just important to make sure that our, our community is safe, that the risk mitigation steps have been taken accordingly. And I do support the potential policy. I should have mentioned also at the beginning, and I know Dr. Sawyer did mention that, that any such policy adoption, if that's what we choose to do, would be subject to impact bargaining with employee associations regarding how it is to be administered, including timelines and documentation requirements. So any further questions or comments for Ms. Malone? Any further comments, Dr. Sawyer?
No, I mean, clearly there's consensus among the committee, I think. And what would make sense is for the administration to work on some kind of document that you could vote on at your next meeting. And as we're preparing that, beginning the process of working with our employee groups around impact bargaining, about how that would work. And hopefully we can make those two things, you know, work in harmony. And then, you know, we'll, we'll get some consideration of what time, kind of timeline might make sense. You know, there have been some districts that have gone ahead and done this. We'll certainly look to some exemplars around things that could help us. We want to reinvent the wheel. And again, as, as was referenced by Ms. Heffernan, that, you know, the state overall union does support this. So I would not anticipate at this time that there'd be a concern at the local level. But obviously we have to have those conversations. But it is within the purview of the committee to make the decision. And then the question is, the how is what, you know, needs to be appropriately bargained with employee groups. And of course, we'll have, we'll reach out to our employees who are not represented as well, just in fairness. But we have some legal obligations to those collective bargaining units.
Very much. Okay, on to the next item on our agenda, which is under finance and operations. It is a report about fiscal year 2022 staffing. And we have Barb Malone, who's the executive director of human resources, here to present a report describing personnel changes in the district for the 2021, 2022 school year. Ms. Malone, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. So in, in 2021, 2022, which feels like we're already, you know, well into it, we really thought a lot about what our goals were. And I think they can be still distilled down to kind of the three things you see on your screen. Obviously, we had to staff the Howard W. Beale School. And, you know, I know we're all very grateful to the town for voting positively for that override as well as the people right here who worked on that. And then, of course, we had to do our usual hiring due to retirements and resignations and non-renewals. The second that is because of the pandemic, because of the mental health concerns that have arisen, because of the need for school nurses, we really needed to fill those hard to find positions. And then finally increase the diversity of our teams. So I wanted to talk first about what are those hardest positions to fill? So interestingly, this year, one I did not anticipate, but it's speech language pathologist has actually been our hardest to fill position. And so we're working diligently, actually sent an all-call out to our staff today saying we have three positions available right now, two due to leaves and, and one just a regular replacement position. And we are getting some lines on some about to graduate master's level speech language pathologists. So we're hoping that we'll be able to capitalize on some of that. School nurses, just like last year, this is a group of employees that are incredibly stretched. They have new demands on them. They work very hard. I just give them a lot of credit. We need more. And we have some postings up for that. Our special education teacher positions will all be filled, I think, by the end of this week. We did have one that was still outstanding, but that is, that's just always difficult to fill. ABA technicians are always fairly difficult to fill. And then just long-term substitute teachers and specialists and dated substitute teachers. Those are, you know, absenteeism is, is up due to the impacts of, of the pandemic and the student need is higher. And, you know, while I don't have all the statistics right in front of me, we've had other school committee meetings where we've talked about some of those, those impacts. Diversity of staff is clearly an important topic. We did utilize a new website this time for attracting candidates, WIMdiversity.com. So on that site, we do point people to School Spring, which is our main site. But we're, we started to see, we started to see a little bit of interest from that site. I think there are some ways we can probably capitalize more on that site and, and have it really be a good sourcing partner for us. I was talking with Dr. Sawyer. Every few years, we do have to report, it's EEO five report. I can see Ms. Fritz is familiar with that one, Ms. Heffernan. So just as a point of comparison, this year hires, new hires from July 1st to September 1st, 17% self-reported in the diverse federal categories as compared to 5.3% three years ago. So we clearly saw an increase in our actual final hiring decisions resulting in a higher percentage of people that would be in those, those diverse categories. And then, of course, there's a lot of different things in the works where we're thinking about diversity in the future and, and how to improve things in, in the school system. One thing that's coming up is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is putting together a professional learning community. They have 100 districts involved. We're one of them. And we have put together a team that's going to participate in that PLC. And we're going to learn more about teacher recruitment, teacher retention, even some curriculum, just a lot of different things related to attracting or retaining diverse candidates. So we're very interested in proceeding with that. We have an eight-member team. And it's made up of four frontline people, either school counselors, school adjustment counselor, classroom teacher, and four people in administrative positions. So I think it's, it's a good group, and I think we'll get a lot of representation in looking at that. And that should help drive that forward. So some of our typical statistics that I report on, applicants to our professional level positions. In the end, we actually had more than last year, but I still think this is, I'd have to check, but I think this is lower than prior to the pandemic. So 2.47% of those who applied were appointed to a professional position with us. And for paraprofessional positions, we are seeing an increase in percentage of those who applied were appointed. So it was 15, 15.3%. So in your detailed report, you have the year-over-year comparisons. And I would say that in general, teacher hiring is sort of leveling, leveling out into more of a typical percentage for us, indicating there, in most areas, there were enough candidates for us. We were able to attract enough candidates into the positions, with the exception of those ones I mentioned on the earlier slides. But in the paraprofessional level positions, we're attracted But in the paraprofessional-level positions, we're attracting slightly fewer than we have in the past, and so that's driving up the percentage of hires. So some other statistical things, we actually had an unusual year for district leadership positions, and by district leadership, we do mean people who are on our district leadership team. So that can be anyone who's charged with evaluating another individual, and also includes our elementary curriculum coach, coaches, curriculum coordinators and instructional coaches. So we had eleven this year, and the vast majority of those were actually filled through internal movement, people who advanced their career into a new role for us. Professional-level positions, which are the teachers and specialists, we have hired forty, pairs fifty-four. This was a huge year for school secretary slash administrative, administrative assistants retiring, and we actually replaced five across the district this year. So there are many years when I report none to you, so this was a very unusual year. And so altogether, it was a hundred and ten positions that have been filled thus far. And then I always like to, first of all, you have to thank the town of Shrewsbury, they voted for the override, and that is what really helped us staff the, the Beal School, its beautiful building, and it's just amazing. So I'm so happy that we've been able to bring people in, to give the students what they need and what they deserve. As always, there are educators, parents, and students who serve on our staff committees, but there are five sort of back-office people who do a Herculean job in, in the backward, in the back, out of the everybody sites, and that is Katie Fox, Chris Matiro, Christine Fowler, Sue Rapp, and Nick Hawes. Those, those are the five people who do the primary work of bringing people onboard. And I also want to just, just add another thank you that Donna, my God, I just lost her name, Donna?
Manzoli.
Manzoli, thank you. Donna Manzoli, who was with the district for many years, did retire, we brought in Liz Tedesco, and so Liz is, is getting the hang of things, and I would also add her to that list. She came a little later on to the group, but I do want to give a shout out to both Donna and Liz for, for the role they play, particularly in bringing on teachers. So that is, those are the high points, and now I'm happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you, Ms. Malone. Colleagues, questions or comments? Ms. Heffernan?
You, you mentioned a little bit, but I don't, I think, professional learning communities are a sort of an educator term of art, as not something maybe many people are familiar with. Can you just say, so an eight-member team, and you're going to do what? Like, what, what should people understand that means as a commitment of certainly the district's time and resources? Eight of you are going to participate in something, but could you just say just a little bit more? Because it seems like you're trying to tackle a really important issue about the diversity of our staff.
Yeah, so this is the second cohort that DESI is, is putting forth, and basically, you learn together as a group with a lot of discussion points, like why? Why is it important to have diverse educators in the district? And then beyond that, what are some things that have worked for other districts? So you can, for example, do like a grow-your-own, where you, you put money and resources behind helping your own staff get, obtain teacher licensure. You can go to historic, historically black universities, you can, there's a whole variety of things, and what they do is they basically present case studies of different districts that have tried different things and what it has done for them in terms of improving the diversity of their workforce. And then within your own group, you really talk about what your own culture needs, what your own path might be, and, and then you have opportunities to really discuss this with other, I'm probably telling you way too much information, but I am passionate about it, and I think that it's really meant to help districts who maybe haven't had the diversity that they would like to match to their community, get a lot of different ideas, talk to people who have made it work, and work among themselves to have a better result for kids. I think the statistic is nationally, I think, eight percent of educators identify, self-identify as people of color, eight percent. So, you know, even our statistic of seventeen percent of our new hires is much, much higher than that, that percentage for Massachusetts, but there's so much more we can do. So that's, that's what the group is going to do.
If I can, just as, thank you so much, and I should have said thank you for the whole presentation. I think it's really important to know our, our people make up our institution, right? And so what, the work that you do is really important, but I just want to echo, or I guess, double down on how the investment of time and resources to have people engaged in that sort of community and having a team, and I understand that's how DESI created it, but the commitment by you, Dr. Sawyer, to say, this is important work, this is worth the time and effort and engagement in an ongoing way. Clearly, you know, Shrewsbury alone can't solve a teacher educator sort of challenge of a lack of diversity in the field, but that, that there might be other opportunities for us to explore new things, and I'm happy with the direction of the trend over the last few years, and know that it's an important, important piece for us. So thank you for sharing a little bit more about what, what's going on there.
Great. Ms. Fritz?
Thank you for your report, and thank you for all the work that you've done in through COVID. I mean, we've had a lot of challenges, and as Ms. Heffernan just stated, you know, you've taken on this challenge of making sure that we are, you know, becoming a more diverse employer, and, you know, looking at just that seven-one to nine-one, you know, statistic of self-reporting, we've done that, and it's because you've, you've really taken that on in making sure that we're looking at other areas to get candidates, but we still are a very desirable district, even in a, we know it's hard to find people right now in every industry. I mean, it's, it's just difficult to find people to fill roles, so thank you for everything you're doing, on top of everything else that you're doing. And I look at the number of applicants that are coming in, and just shifting through all of that has to be a lot of work, so thank you for everything you're doing.
I appreciate that, but I really have to turn that compliment back to the district leadership team, because our principals and assistant principals and all of those directors and, you know, people in those roles, it really is a team effort, it couldn't ever be done by any one person. So, you know, I appreciate Dr. Sawyer's support, but I also appreciate the support of all the, all the people in positions to be making hiring recommendations and, and all the work that they put in. So it really is a group effort, I had to say it, so thank you.
Thank you to everyone, right.
Additional questions or comments?
Real quick, I was curious about the demand for nurses, school nurses. You said that those were on the list of people who are particularly hard to find. Have we experienced much in the way of turnover among our nurses? Do we have a high demand for nurses?
We have not experienced a turnover really at all. I mean, we had one retirement in the last couple of years, but no, it's just that we have such a need for school nursing, for long-term substitute nurses, that, you know, just as an example, there was a day recently when three of our school nurses had to be out themselves, because they were having symptoms that would require them to, to be home according to protocols and get a test. So there's, there is a hugely increased demand created by contact tracing and just a variety of other activities. It just simply can't be done with just our normal, ordinary staffing ratios.
So rather than seeing people leave, what we're experiencing is the fact that we're trying to staff up a little bit more and aren't able to meet that goal quite yet.
Yeah, it's very difficult, and I, I think, you know, you're, I'm sure that you're well aware of the difficulties throughout the medical and mental health community to find the right people for these jobs. So, yeah, I appreciate the question.
Ms. Pouch?
Thank you for the report. As always, I am, I'm fascinated by the percentage of applications for professional-level positions that we're able to, to hire, which is astoundingly low. I know, as you indicated, obviously, it's a little bit higher this year, but 2.47% is is still quite low. I'm curious if you have a sense of other districts, and certainly I don't expect that you would have that detailed number for any other district, but do you, do you have a sense for professional-level educators, Shrewsbury versus comparable districts or neighboring districts? Are we unusually selective?
Well, I like to think so. I mean, I do respect my HR colleagues at a lot of other districts, and I think that they take it very seriously and...
Let me just rephrase that a little bit. Obviously, I know that Shrewsbury has very high standards. I meant, are we, are we an outlier per se?
Well, I think our process is a little bit of an outlier, and maybe even a lot of an outlier, because the process really requires, you know, a demonstration lesson, you know, rounds of, of different levels of interviews and background checks, and that's the student feedback and the parent feedback, and I think that those things don't always happen in other districts. I think that that process, which really goes back to the days of Dr. Bent and Tom Kennedy, you know, that, that was a tremendous legacy that they gave us to move forward with, and that is a very tried-and-true process, and I think it, it does result in us being maybe pickier or spotting things before someone becomes our employee. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Malone, for the presentation and all the work you and your supporting cast did over the summer, certainly a hundred and ten new hires, that's, that's quite a large list, but you can also see the, the longer list of applicants you have to go through. I particularly like to see also the, the promotions that happen within the district to procure that top talent in some key positions, as you've listed here in the report. So thank you and your, your staff for, for all they've done. And again, it's another reminder of what the community allowed us to do with the passage of that override, including those thirty-two staff members that were required for powering Beal, Beal School. So it's really great to see and appreciate the detail.
Right.
For Dr. Sawyer, any further questions?
I appreciate the recognition that the members are, are giving to Ms. Malone and everyone, and certainly, as Ms. Malone mentioned, everyone has been part of hiring teams, are all part of this process. But, you know, Ms. Malone is humble. She has been, you know, in a human resources department than in a typical organization would be much, much larger in terms of support. That's just not the model in public school districts, and so she and Katie Fox and Chris Matiro, as well as other colleagues at Central Office, have done really incredible work, just given the volume of work that they have, and to make sure we're doing it at a quality level is very meaningful and important. I, I think, you know, Ms. Malone is extremely planful, I know she worked carefully with Mr. Girardi, the principal at Beal, far, far in advance. I mean, we're talking a year, two years ago, they were already starting, you know, planning for personnel, what was going to have to happen, and then, of course, that got put on hold because of the override situation and the budget situation. So it condensed that timeline, and the fact that we opened that new school with what I think is a really extraordinary new hires, as well as transfers, because there was transfers from other parts of the district, which was all done in a very fair and thoughtful way, that also involved, Ms. Malone is, is key for involving our employee associations with various elements. So, you know, when, when I asked for feedback about the various central office administrators at the end of the year, each time I've done that, you know, Ms. Malone's colleagues across the district are always talking about how responsive she is, organized, planful, and helping them work through, of course, the hiring process, as well as other kinds of personnel issues that come up in a district our size. So again, very, very grateful for her work and, her work ethic and the quality of, of her work, and as a result, our staff and our students benefit. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Malone. Appreciate it. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Minutes from the school committee meeting held on September 22nd, 2021 were closed. Any revisions or edits? There being none, they'll be accepted as written. We do need to go into executive session tonight, so with that, I need a motion that the school committee enter into, let me just make sure I got this lined up here, executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association, and C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, purpose two, non-represented substitute teaching staff where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded, a roll call vote is required. Mr. Pouch?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, thank you, and good night.